Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance of the meetings law notifications, adopt the agenda. You can all stand with me in pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, thank you. Comments from the audience regarding agenda items? You're all here to speak, so we don't have any audience on this, so I'll save that spiel for tonight. And then we'll go on to gifts, donations, recognition, student and staff spotlight. Hills Corners Elementary Recognition with Lori Gomes.
Hi everybody.
Hi.
Hello.
We had the wonderful honor of be recognized for our work in PBIS again this year. This is our second year of silver award level. Two years prior, in the fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen, sixteen school years, we were a recognized school for PBIS. They kind of changed the rules midstream and so combining with RTI for academics as well. So did invite the team, which has really grown through the years. We received training back in the spring of twelve. We were trying to remember back, I was trying to remember back how far it's been, but our external coaches, Kathy Westfall, all of this, the way through this journey. And Kathy started with us as our external coach for tier one. And then in the spring of sixteen, we were trained in tier two interventions and she remained our external coach. Allison Schnorr could be with us tonight. She's our internal coach. She's a third grade teacher. And Kami Kaburka is our internal coach for tier two. One of the things that we did, well, two years ago now, is we created a subcommittee structure to really expand the, you know, the buy-in from staff instead of maybe a five or seven person committee to include three subcommittees. And because of that expansion, not only have, I think, we've increased the buy-in and just the ownership of the whole process amongst our staff. So we have three subcommittees that work on family engagement, celebrations, acknowledgement, as well as like looking at the data and the boosters piece of it. The goal here is, for those of you who are parents, you might know how it is when you're working with your partner in regards to, you know, being on the same page with how you're speaking to your child or children. Can you imagine spreading that out over a staff of, you know, nearly eighty people? So what we try to do is get on the same page. And that's really the goal and having our expectations really clear for kids. So they know the boundaries and we always go back to that, our being safe, respectful, and responsible. And how does that look and how does that look within our walls? Because it sometimes might look different within the walls or on our school grounds as it would maybe in their own homes. So we're really trying to bridge that gap of having them understand also like here and now, this is how we treat one another. I just want to give a great shout out to Amy Stuntle's presentation last board meeting about Edge a Climber. It has been a wonderful thing for us in regards to tracking data and really having staff keep tabs on, our ability to keep tabs on, on not letting kids fall through the cracks in regards to any kind of behaviors that we feel like we need to really kind of be mindful of and notice. So she talked about a percentage and I want to say it was in the seventy-five percent use, but I will tell you, we are at a hundred percent use as it relates to behavior data. And it's been really, really super helpful for us. So the team that came along tonight, Kathy Westfall, who's our external coach as I mentioned, Andrea Kavikas, who's on one of the subcommittee celebrations, and Cindy Caroll, who is the chair of the family engagement subcommittee. So, and they really wanted to talk a lot tonight, so, no they don't. They just want to be there to support. I told them they could wear their t-shirts just to shout out. So we're really proud of the progress. We're really hoping that we can move it to the gold level and we can start to see how that academic data will really interface with the behavior data. So any questions or thoughts? No? Okay. Thanks.
I'll fire you from the gold level.
You know what? They kind of change the, keep changing the markers on us, but it has to do now with having implemented academic RTI data for two years or something like that. And I think we also have to be at tier three for behavior. Isn't that correct? Something like that?
That's platinum.
That's platinum. Oh, see, I was looking at platinum. But we're not there for tier three data for, for behavior yet. But I really feel like we're getting really close if not, you know, really, really inching closer to that, to that gold level.
Good. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations, Ed. Thank you. You sure you don't want to talk? We've got lots of time. No, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for all the work you do with it. It's fantastic. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda number five. A is approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of May twenty-first and June eleven, two thousand and eighteen, school board minutes. C is approval of personnel recommendations. D is approval of six, six point zero three zero one agreements. I, forward-thinking, alternative school collaboration, S P E D program with Greendale. Two is twenty eighteen, nineteen Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance, S W S A. Three is Business Teacher Consortium. And four is Behavior Consultation Services. Would anyone like to remove an item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to six action items. Six A is preliminary budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. On to B, Whitman High School Facilities Project. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And my computer just went blank. Thank you. Item, I wish we could turn off the screensaver. Item C is Whitman Middle School Facilities Project. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to D, twenty eighteen, nineteen Staff Handbook. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Nothing changed since last time?
No, yeah, there's changes.
Well, let's, let's. I mean, nothing, and, yeah, I know there's some, but I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to just, just talk about a few pieces. So first of all, let's talk, you want, let's, let's talk about the need, the paraprofessionals, instructional aides and holidays. One of the major things from last week was we don't want to go backwards with people and, and take things necessarily away or something to that effect. So I just want to give you a little, a little historical piece here. Traditionally, we've budgeted a hundred and eighty-three days for our instructional aides. What that's consisted of is a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and seventy-eight, dependent upon the calendar of time in front of students, and then five holidays to get to your one eighty-three. One eighty-two, one eighty-three, dependent upon the time. There's always been something in their letter of assignment that would say something to the effect of that the special ed director has the ability to call that person in for eight to sixteen hours, day or two throughout the year, should there be the need and whether that actually happened or not in the past. I think it was hit or miss whether those people would, would come in for either additional training or something to that effect. They certainly weren't here before the school year started traditionally, that their first day here was the first day that students were onboard. This year, and even a little bit beginning last year, but this year specifically, we're making a very conscientious effort to not only bring our instructional aides in before the school year starts for paid time for both introduction and some, you know, beginning of year training, but also bringing them in at intervals throughout the year to get additional professional development as well. So for example, this year, they're going to be in front of students for a hundred and seventy-seven days. They're going to be here for a half day on August twenty-seventh, just with all of our staff as far as an introduction to the school year goes and, you know, just be part of that. They're going to be here all day on August twenty-eighth, so there's another additional day. They're going to be here on the, at the principal's request for August twenty-ninth, which is part of the summer school program that we're doing on the twenty-ninth. They are going to be here full days on January eighteenth and full days on April twenty-second for professional development, as well as an additional four to six hours at the discretion of the special ed pupil services director. What that means is they've had a hundred and seventy-seven days here in front of kids, four to five additional days with the coming in before and during the school year on days that they normally wouldn't have. And then if you would give them the three holidays, which would align with our teachers, that would be approximately a hundred and eighty-three or a hundred and eighty-four paid days like they have had in the past and what has been budgeted. You add in those five, the two additional holidays if you want to, or, or keep the five holidays, that would put a budgeted number somewhere around one eighty-six to a hundred and eighty-seven days. We have a very large special ed population, larger than our districts of comparable size. And so those, those effects are large. It'd be about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar decision to pay them some additional days for those holidays. So we're, we're paying them the same amount of days, we're asking them though, so, so their compensation remains the same. We're asking them to take on some professional development opportunities that we're offering throughout the year, more so than we have, and certainly to be a part of our back-to-school and, and with the rest of our staff prior to the school year starting, which they haven't done before. So I know I didn't have those details for you last Monday, but something to consider as you look at that aspect of if we're looking for standardization, which we are, that's certainly a piece of it, that they're not working more than the hundred and ninety-one days that teachers are, are here, yet they get three holidays. That's standardization, but also the consistent compensation would still be there from a total payout for the amount of days that they are going to be paid out. So I just wanted to put that out in front of you as you, as you look at that piece. Do you want to tackle that or should I keep, should I move on to custodial vacation and then kind of talk about it all at once or what do you want to?
Does anybody have, let's just, does anybody?
You want to just take that piece initially?
So, so right now they have five days?
Yes.
And teachers have three?
Correct.
So I have to be clear.
So in the handbook right now, we have three holidays.
You know what page that is?
I'm going to look to my trusty sidekick.
Wait for it. Leave allocations are on page thirty-two.
You know, part of this as well is our interventionists who work at an hourly rate with our, with, with students as well, they are actually benefiting from this. They have traditionally never gotten, for some reason, never gotten holiday pay. And so they are actually increasing holiday pay now because they really should fall within this group. So they would add an additional three days to them. So I mean, it's, it's always, you know, it's not just one group getting less holiday. There's, again, they're still getting the same amount of paid days. Our interventionists actually gain from this language.
Page thirty-two?
Yeah, I'll see that page.
It's a.
Which version? The one that's in the board packet?
It should be labeled appendix E U leave allocations and it's under personal days, or not personal days, paid holidays. So it should be paraprofessionals about halfway down.
Yes.
I've got social networking.
Yeah. It's up on the.
It's up on the screen. It's, it's this chart.
It's not thirty-two in your packet, it's page thirty-two of the staff handbook.
Of the, of the staff.
Oh, my apologies. Well, I'm in the staff handbook and it's not page thirty-two.
Are you in the seventeen, eighteen version or the proposed one?
I'm in the one that's in the board packet.
It's up on the screen.
It's on page sixty-four of the board packet.
Are you on the, the agenda page, not the actual?
No, I'm in the handbook.
Okay, I went to, I went to the agenda because they put it in the agenda. It's page sixty-four of the agenda.
All right.
So this is, up here is taking the two days away.
Correct. Okay, any other questions on this portion of it before Mike goes on to the other changes?
Well, my question for them is going to be the same one, which is what about a grandfather clause? Because we asked about that last time.
I would leave that up to you. If you want to grandfather that in.
But then let our interventionists still have the three days that they wouldn't have gotten before if they're gaining by it. But do the grandfather to preserve someone from losing it, but anyone hired forward would be under the three.
But then the question is, should the interventionists have had five in the past? No, I mean, I guess I'm asking Mike and should they have had, should they have qualified previously for those five days?
No, it's, it's, it's been an employee group that's tough to nail down exactly.
What group they were associated with.
They were.
They're relatively new positions, so they weren't part of a union group prior to Act Ten. They're a relatively new position and so they didn't affiliate with a group before.
That's perfect.
And so most of them are licensed teachers who are serving as a reading interventionist or math interventionist.
Paid hourly.
At an hourly rate.
Correct.
So they didn't affiliate with any group. And they're sort of in this, we're trying to give them affiliations right now when we look at some of the employees. Like our health technicians, those who work at our, each of our buildings, those people, not our school nurse, but our health technicians fall under this category. So when they, when Mike kept saying instructional aides or paraprofessionals, be aware that our health technicians also fall, like, it's not, I, I don't know that that's the best category of group that we're calling them, it's, it's.
It would have to be a whole separate group for health technicians, but it's the same, in essence, they're the same amount of time that they're.
Because I have some questions today too, like who actually belongs in this group? It's a little, like, where does some of these people, because sometimes there's only three or four of a certain person and they didn't necessarily affiliate with something that was attached to.
Certainly the dominant group, paraprofessionals.
And their hours vary from part-time to full-time?
Yep. We, we have the language where if you're less than twenty hours, you do not have those benefits, less than twenty hours per week. So if you're less than that, there aren't, there's no sick or, none of that allocation anyway.
One of the big things we've been talking about is streamlining everything, right? Getting everybody on the same page, getting away from these things stapled or changes or people on different programs or whatever. And I think grandfathering people in keeps us on this, some are on this, some are on that. I don't know if we really want to keep things streamlined. I think we make the change across the board.
But I, I don't think you should do that at the expense of, of people.
Well, it depends on how many people.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, how many people we're talking about we're affecting. If we're talking about a hundred people we're affecting or we're talking about ten people.
So you are talking a lot. You're talking, like I said, we have a large population of, of special ed. And so we have sixty-five total paraprofessionals in the district. Forty-two of those were hired after Act Ten. And as, as far as what you're talking about, as far as bargaining or past bargaining agreements, you know, you've got twenty-three of those people left on staff who, what those agreements were in the past, I don't know. As Lisa alluded to, the health technicians, there's four. Interventionists, there's.
Seven.
Seven. Thank you.
Is everybody in that employee group full-time? No.
No.
So the actual.
Everything's prorated. I mean, it's all prorated hours. How many are less than twenty? Very few of that group. There's less than twenty. We're talking a handful of less than twenty hours.
Last week, Nancy, you'd mentioned potentially doing something, taking one day away this year and one day away tiering it. What if we did that? I'm just saying it's an idea. If we, if we took one day away this year or we announce that over the next two years?
If, if the goal is, is standardization and keeping that pay around a hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-four days, if you want to move in that direction. If, if there isn't that standardization need, if there isn't the need from a budgetary basis to keep it around that one eighty-three, one eighty-four, th- those are the goals that you want to keep in mind with the, with this discussion.
Well, we have.
In my, in my opinion.
Don't we have building grounds people that are grandfathered into things?
So, well, we can discuss that in conjunction with this, I guess.
Well, my question, just across the board, everybody.
It's two different groups though, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, you were in the middle, I interrupted you. Why, I mean, yeah, they have it, but why should they have more than the other people working the same amount of days?
Because they were hired with that assumption.
I think there were a lot of assumptions.
The handbook is subject to change at all times as well. And we changed the sick day thing for the teachers a while back and there was something with that, but it wasn't, you can keep getting them, which was part of it. Eventually you whittled down to where it was, you were with everybody else.
So does everyone use their vacation days?
We're not talking vacation right now. We're only talking the holiday piece.
Holidays, okay, so.
So yes, everyone uses their holidays.
Okay, because we're closed on those days, right?
Yes, yes.
So because we're never open on those holidays here, it's not, I mean, it's like they're not floating holidays because I know some companies have floating holidays and they actually take off. These holidays were never scheduled workdays, so they're just five paid days. Because they were, they were never, some businesses and ours just never is, you know, like Memorial Day or whatever. We would, we're not one of those types of businesses that would be open on them, yeah.
So it's whether or not they get paid for those two days or not, that's really all we're discussing. These other groups get paid, do not get paid for those two days.
And the days, Mike, that you were talking about, August, whatever, and those days, they're going to come in, they're going to get paid for those days.
Yes, correct. Along with the professional development days in January and April, that, that's how they get back to the one eighty-three of, of paid days. This, again, the holidays, adding the two, now put them at one eighty-five. I adjust the budget, it's, like I said, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. But that's where my mind goes and it's, I only dabble in HR.
Did you look to see how much it would cost if we went the other way?
What would that mean?
Going from three to five?
Giving educators five vacation days?
Teachers?
Five paid holidays?
Whatever per diem is and over two hundred teachers. So you've had two hundred teachers, let's call it per diems of three or four hundred dollars.
Can't do the math without a calculator.
I mean, I'm just winging right now. I mean, it's, I. Two hundred teachers. Hundred forty? Hundred forty thousand.
So that's not viable at all?
We could, we could reverse the project.
So Jonathan, how do we put this to bed? Do we, do I make a motion, do?
No.
And then see how it works or what do we do?
I think at this point I would say all in favor and then all opposed.
Once we get past the other stuff.
Yeah, if it, once we do, yes, after we get through all the other conversation. If it passes, we move on. If it ultimately fails, we can suggest a revised version. And then we would pass a motion to approve based on these changes. If that passes, we move forward, they make those changes.
Mike, good correction, a parley pro on that, sorry. I was a parley pro nerd at one point. So the motion's already on the table, it's been first and seconded. So what you need to do is first make an amendment, which you can do first, and then if that amendment passes, then you, but you have to be, because there is a motion on the table already. So it's not like before, before we were doing it correctly where we were like having a discussion and putting a motion on the table. So there is a current motion on the table here. So you either have to vote that down and then someone could go back with a second one, but what you technically should do is offer an amendment to revise some pieces and then see if those amendments pass. And you can do the amendment separately or you can do a group amendment. My recommendation would be to do separate amendments to whatever else Mike's going to talk about here and vote on each of those. And then if those amendments pass, then the, then the motion that you're in the middle of right now discussing would have those amendments with it.
So we don't have to vote this one down completely?
Well, you can have amendments to it. Because otherwise you wouldn't have amendments, you'd come back with a whole new motion, there would never be a purpose for amendments. So that's what amendment is, yeah.
So we should wait till the end? Or should we make a, try and?
I was going to say, let's go through each, write down, if you want to make an amendment, write it down now, we'll vote for each of the other things you want to talk about.
You could do them separately. I would just say, in case there's anything he's going to add value to that might cause you to think differently collectively. I mean, there, there would be nothing to hold off for, but I would just say that.
Nancy, hold on, are the amendments going to have to be part of the minutes?
Yeah, because you're taking a vote on them.
Kathy, do you want it, should we just have Kathy write down the amendments now?
Well, someone's going to have to make, offer it.
I understand, but we're going to have to have them recorded.
Yeah, but you have to, then the person has to accept it and the person who made the motion has to accept the amendment. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when someone makes an amendment, she has to record it at that point. See? Does that make sense or no?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
So this first one is, while it's a difficult decision, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, we're looking at three or five. Here we go, all right. So second thing we talked about last week was the custodial vacation. What we have put, so, so what was asked for was a breakdown of, of these groups of people, how long they've been here, different, differently, and I gave that information to you, me taking a deeper look at that, I think there's a real clear divide between groups that are, of those who are currently above twenty days and have, can accrue up to twenty-five versus those who are under twenty and, and the years of service in that divide. So what we have put forth in the handbook for this week, for, for right now, is that we would cap everyone who is not at twenty vacation days, we would cap those individuals at twenty. Okay, so if you're looking at that graph or at the, at the chart that I, spreadsheet that I gave you, anyone not at twenty, they would be capped at twenty moving forward. You would ask that they follow the administrative, what's currently the administrative assistant vacation schedule.
It's page seventy-one in the packet.
Seventy-one in the packet.
Thank you.
That's actually more than what we were, that that's more restrictive than what we brought forward last week, which was starting July one, we would cap people at twenty days upon hire. So, so we're actually looking at the spreadsheet, we're bringing forward that. There's a couple, we gave you a couple of different options though of language that we could certainly implement. You know, one thing that if you're looking for a compromise of this twenty-five days that I think could be effective if you want to think about it, well, let's just start, let's, let's start here first. What we have here is these employee groups are the custodial group, being capped at twenty days, twenty days of vacation, four weeks, and following the administrative assistance schedule for vacation accrual.
Well, I do like that they start, that they get vacation under one year, prorated vacation, under one year, because I think it's really hard for someone to wait for two weeks of vacation after they've worked a year.
Mm-hmm.
Without no time. So I, I like that. I, I still think that we should, for any new hires under this new plan and any current hires should be under the plan that they already have. So they could still earn up to the twenty-five days.
Justice employee group, Nancy?
For the custodians, yeah.
Okay, not the other employee groups who work two sixty.
What about the other two sixty groups? So our administrative office, district office, administrative assistants, they follow that schedule where they are capped at twenty days after twenty years. That's how it's always been for them. So there's been these two sixty employees, custodians with one, and our other two sixty administrative assistants with a separate schedule. The idea was to, again, bring this together. I think, I think the current schedule in which they, in which custodians can get to twenty-five, five. I think, I think the current schedule in which they, in which custodians can get to twenty-five, five weeks of vacation after twelve years, is fast. If we're gonna go that route, I think that's fast. So, they can get to twenty, oh, excuse me, twenty-one day, they can get greater than twenty days, sorry, after, after ten years. I think that's quick, especially compared to the administrative assistants, those timeframes don't jive. Why can one two sixty employee group, two hundred and sixty day employee group get to twenty days after ten years, while another one can get to twenty days after twenty years? The idea was to combine these two together with administrative assistant pace. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so for any new hires, then they would be on the same pay, they would be on the same schedule as the administrative assistants. But for the current custodians, they would be on their current.
Okay.
Current?
That's what I'm saying to be-
That's what she, that's what she's saying.
That's what I'm, I'm saying.
So, you're looking to grandfather the minute?
Right.
So, it'd be the original language of after July first, twenty eighteen, any hires.
Mean custodial group.
Keep administrative assistants then the same?
Well, that's their current plan now, right?
It causes, if we wanna talk about groups not understanding or being divided, why can one group accrue more vacation than a group that works the exact same amount of time? I, I don't like it. But if that's, I, I personally don't like that.
But it's, it's, what, what, one person was hired under, as opposed to another person was hired.
You're also gonna have, when it comes down to, like, you're talking about anybody hired after whatever date, then you're gonna have twenty years down the road, if we got a bunch of people working here, a good group of employees that have been maybe within five years separated, that have drastically different vacation or paid days for a day difference, whereas before the idea was, okay, well, the people that are gonna have these days are already grandfathered in, by the time anybody's even gonna get to that, none of those people are gonna be working here, they're gonna be retired by then. So, you're never gonna have that overlap of, wow, why didn't I get this, you got it, and you're still here. You got some divide then, if we go with that.
I, I think people understand and accept the grandfather piece as employee. I think they get irritated when you take things away, when they are doing a good job, when they are giving them, giving us their service, when they are giving us their loyalty on a daily basis.
Well, what are we taking away? Is, we're not taking away from the people that have already hit the max, you're talking about taking something away from someone who doesn't have it yet, in twenty years they might have.
So-
Someone's been working here for a year, they could get the twenty-five days if we go with that idea.
Yeah, that's what I was hired under. That's the agreement I made, right?
Also says in the back of this, we can change this stuff at any time.
So, um, I apologize, cause I printed this out at work and I left it there, so I, I don't have the other information that you had sent, I could look it up, but. So, how close are people, or how many people are there that, um, have reached the twenty days, but have not reached any higher than the twenty days, and how close are they to that?
Custodial group, there are...
There's a number that is under a year, and, and we did throw out the idea of retroactive to July one, twenty seventeen, instead of July one, twenty eighteen, wanna do that breakdown though, Karen.
There are, there are twelve custodians who have zero to sixteen years, two that are on the cusp of twenty-three, twenty-four years, and then eight who are already at twenty-five, or days, days.
So, we have, we have, um, an employee, that, there's like a cutoff of eight years, there's employees been here eight years, and then the next one is probably seventeen or eighteen years, as far as full-time custodians go. And that's where I, I came in, you know, saying, there's this divide, there's a clear divide between eight years and under, and then seventeen and over.
Yeah, it's a gap.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big one too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's really only two that are in that mid-range, the seventeen, eighteen that you said, for how long they've been-
Yeah, and then, and then the rest, like, thirty.
Yeah.
So, by putting a cap on it, even those that are under the group that have been here eight years or less, they would still have the opportunity to at least get to twenty days?
Yeah.
Even if you capped it, because they're that far off from hitting the point that which they'd earned more than twenty?
We let them still get to twenty. We let them get to twenty. You know, a, a, another piece to this, what else, if you wanna look at compromising, was we don't let anybody roll over vacation. Maybe you let people roll over five days of vacation from year to year without any, you know, supervisor agreement. So, those who get to twenty, if they want twenty-five for the next year, they have to save those five and then roll it over for the following year. That could be a compromise here, where you could still let people get to twenty-five every other year if they don't use all, all, you know, only use fifteen of their days in one year.
But that would define all the groups across the board, not just-
Yeah, we'd have to apply that to everybody, agree. Yes, it would be custodial. I mean, when we're talking vacation here, we're talking about our two sixty employees. We're talking our custodians, our district office administrative assistants.
And the benefit to roll over days hasn't ever been given to any of those groups before. Lisa's thinking, I'm creating an error, okay?
Not officially? Yes.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
So, they can still add five days to whatever their total is every other year, so it's adding something.
But that's by decreasing five years in one year and adding it to the next year, so it's not, it's just a wash.
It's just a compromise, it's a wash.
Only if they're utilizing all their vacation days. If they don't utilize all their vacation days, they're still not losing anything.
Do they take their vacation days?
I would have to look into that.
Yeah, I don't think that really matters.
Yeah, Todd, I mean, Todd would know, Todd would say yes, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're especially using it right now. Right now, everybody kinda clears the bank, and that puts Todd in a tough position at, at this point in the year, where, hey, there's no rollover, you use or lose, you know, and-
So, that might actually help out the department by allowing a rollover potentially.
It would, it would allow some flexibility for Todd, you know, to say, hey.
And how many paid holidays do they get?
Ten. And they get twelve sick days, and twelve sick days.
As well as the administrative assistant group?
They get twelve sick days.
And ten paid holidays.
Ten paid holidays. Should I move on to one more piece, and then we can kinda just circle back and amend and do different things? Okay, this is fun. Okay, so, the last thing I wanted to bring up is, and we didn't bring this up last time, I just wanted everybody to be aware of it, is we do have Fair Labor Standards Act language, uh, in the, in the handbook that says that to receive overtime pay, you have to be actively, uh, you have to be present at work to receive overtime pay. That's Fair Labor Standards, uh, verbiage. I, I threw this out to my, so predominantly, this affects, again, the custodians. Um, for example, if you call in sick, if there's a vacation day used, and then you get called in on Saturday or Sunday, um, you haven't been presently, you haven't been actually present at work for forty hours to get above the overtime pay. Now, to put this into context, and I believe we have talked about this before, to put this into context, I did reach out to some area districts, I only got three responses back, uh, but Muskego, Norway, Greenfield, and Franklin all require that people are present, physically present at work for more than forty hours to get overtime pay. Um, so, that's the language that's in the handbook. I can understand, um, if we wanted to be lenient on that specifically, specifically with vacation. You are asking your employer, if you can take a day off, your employer is saying, in essence, yes, you may take this day off. You've, this is a, as we're looking at the schedule, an earned benefit that you have received. Um, whereas if you then get called in, and really, I'm thinking in my mind, snowplowing, you come in and you snowplow on a Saturday or a Sunday, we're not gonna give you overtime because you weren't physically present on that Monday. Um, so, what's in there right now is the language as the Fair Labor Standards Act has it, and what deems, what would be deemed for overtime. I could see striking out, if we're looking at an amendment, striking out vacation. I have a harder time with sick time or personal, um, time, if you're not present at work. Um, vacation, though, I could see striking out the word vacation, or simply leaving it up to the employer to say, yes, we need you in to, to snowplow. Yes, of course, we'll pay you time and a half, or for Sundays for the double time, um, leaving it up to the employer to be able, at their discretion. And we're, we're leaving it up to Todd when he makes those calls, or whatever the case is. So, the fair, I, we didn't bring this up last time, but it's in there as language, and it was brought to our attention from, um, from an employee, and I did wanna bring that forward, so that you knew that was in there, and that we could, that could be an amendment as well, so.
So, what's, what's your difference between a day off, a vacation day, or a sick day? A day off, right?
Typically, vacation is a pre-approved.
Pre-approved, but also vacation is earned and a paid out benefit as well. Sick time is not paid out, a vacation day is earned, and if, if you would leave the district, would get paid out, whereas sick time is simply, um, a benefit that the district gives you, or if you lose or you don't-
Well, you don't get paid for that, for sick time?
You don't get paid out upon leaving.
No.
Okay, sorry to put these tough decisions in here. So, that, that's in there. If you don't want it in there, we could strike it out completely. Um, just wanted you to be aware that it's there.
I think adding verbiage to say exemptions can be made based on the discretion of the direct supervisor. If we're gonna do anything, I think striking the whole section out, because it needs to be in there if it is law, but.
It's just this Fair Labor Standards Act definition of overtime, that you must be, it's hours worked.
Right.
But the employer and the employee can come to any agreement that they want on this link, they're putting it forth.
So, like, our definition is hours paid?
Hours paid. Okay. Hey, should we circle back around?
Okay, so now we need to decide on amendments. I have to see the first one, and Nancy, you're trying to get down, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Whether or not she wants-
The first one would be holidays.
She was writing something down like she wanted.
Um, we should be jarring whoever wants to make the amendment, or state the amendment.
If there's an amendment.
If there is an amendment. Anyone interested in making an amendment regarding the holiday?
We're talking about the paraprofessionals now, holidays, the paraprofessionals?
We're talking about, yeah. This would cover our paraprofessionals, our nurse technicians, and-
Interventionists.
Interventionists, thank you.
Anyone interested in making an amendment?
I think she's writing words down.
Yes.
Okay.
So... I just have to think about what it is.
And they get, uh, that group gets, uh, sick days as well?
They get sick days, um, eight, eight sick days, as well as two personal days.
Correct.
Remember, we're not taking-
Which mirrors what the educators do, that what teachers do, same, okay, I was just, I just wanted to make sure.
No, we're not taking vacation days away from them. They're just not getting paid.
They have vacation days, yeah.
They have two personal days.
No, I'm saying, but with reducing, we're not taking vacation days away from them, they're just not getting paid.
Right, but those are holidays, those are not vacation days.
Holidays. He means holidays.
Yeah, okay.
I'm s- yeah, I'm, whatever, personal days, whatever you wanna call it.
This is the holiday discussion.
What do you mean, we're not taking away?
Well, it's not a, what I meant by vacu- it's not days that they would use, like, I wanna take next Tuesday off, I'm gonna use this day to take next Tuesday off. It's not a discretionary day that they can choose to use, it's just a day that they would s- get paid for normally, that's it.
But in reality, they're still gonna get paid for the same number of days, cause they wouldn't have passed.
Yes, it'd be somewhere, it'd be one eighty-three or one eighty-four, dependent upon.
Yeah, we're just saying that those two days you have to be here, as opposed to being at home.
Have to be here, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So, if I say, um, to reduce it from five to three over a two-year period, do you understand what that means, or do I-
I certainly do, Nancy.
Pay that out, okay, I mean, explain that out, okay. Alright, well then-
I, I mean, I mean, so, so, over a two-year period, meaning in eighteen, no, I guess I do need, in eighteen, nineteen, there will be four.
Yes.
In nineteen, twenty, there will be three.
Yes.
So, then we're voting on each individual amendment?
Correct, cause each one have, they may or may not pass, and then when you make-
So, do, do I need to specifically say that?
Got it. I'll go back to the tape.
I'm saying, cause you had to do this head up.
Okay.
Okay, well then, I would like to make an am- amendment, uh, regarding the paraprofessionals, the nurse technician, and the interventionist, um, to reduce the amount of paid holidays from five to three over a two-year period of time.
Okay, so we made the motion, do we have a second? He's seeing none, so that means it fails?
It needs, well, it needs to have a second to move it forward, even take a vote, so without a second, it can't have a vote.
Okay, okay, so then that motion fails?
Yeah, but somebody else could offer a different one.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the employees keep their five days of holidays.
Okay, do we have a second?
Can we move on?
Okay, seeing none, okay. Now, second amendment?
Custodial, that.
Vacation schedule. Any amendments to this? So, it'd be grandfathering everyone in and starting the new schedule effective?
That's the current proposal, so unless somebody wants something different than that, that's the way that that one stands, right?
Yes.
I'm thinking, does anyone need to make-
For the holidays?
No, no, we're on custodians, we're done, nobody else offered it. You're the one that's got, you gotta give it to her.
I got my post-it, yeah.
Update your post-its.
Yeah, I got, I'll update my post-its.
So, anything for the holidays, I'm sorry, for the-
Vacation schedule.
Vacation schedule.
So, for the vacation schedule for the custodians, right now in the handbook, it is, um, if they've accrued less than twenty days of vacation before July first, they'll be capped at their current amount until the anniversary of the next, uh, not to exceed twenty days.
Can I, can you say that again?
They would, they would, in essence, accrue up to twenty.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
But anybody who's in limbo would be capped at that, like, someone who's getting ready, is there anybody who's in this, like, somewhere between twenty and-
There's a couple that are between twenty and twenty-five, I think.
And they would con- and they would continue to go to, okay.
They would continue to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't see any amendments for that, okay?
Yeah, for the last one, I think we had this discussion last year about the paid hours.
Yeah, we did, we did.
So, I'd make a motion to, well, add the language that it's gonna, we have, we can keep the Fair Labor Standards in there, but add the language that we will make it paid hours counting toward overtime. To your accrual, to your accrual of forty hours, and then anything after that would be overtime for what we had previous.
So, we're gonna make that the standard across the board, or give it discretion to the manager? Which one?
I'm okay with keeping it standard across the board as it was before.
And then, just a point of clarification on that, you're talking paid hours, so that would include sick time and vacation?
Yes.
Okay, so then, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
That's paid hours.
Okay, any other discussion on that amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Aye, okay. So, we're gonna carry that amendment, so make the amendment to say that all it's paid hours as opposed to the-
I'm sorry, I didn't say that very eloquently.
Okay.
So, is everyone-
Is everyone clear where we, where we stand right now?
Do we need to hear?
We have one passed amendment.
Yep.
We have one passed amendment.
So, but with the exception of the amendment, anything in the proposed handbook is what we're adopting.
And we vote on the original motion. So it's as it stands.
Correct. Any other questions now before we vote that vote?
Can I try one more amendment on the paraprofessionals?
By all means.
Maybe this might help a little bit.
Go for it.
Okay, how about if the, the, those three groups keep their five days of paid holidays for the twenty eighteen nineteen? And then for the next contra, or the next year, they go to four, and the following year, they go to three. That gives it over a three-year period of time that they would decrease. And then after that time, they would be on the same schedule.
So you're just lengthening it a year?
Yes.
Okay. Amendment?
Yes, that was the amendment.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that amendment carries. So we have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent, two amendments. Okay, any other discussion before we move forward with this? Okay, so you know then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, you guys, I appreciate the discussion, thank you.
All right, seven reports, A is a referendum update.
Kathy, so I gave, Kathy, I just, so I should, we met last Thursday as one, one as a Google Drive share and one was an email. So I just wanted to give you, and I'm going to really make sure everybody hears this. This is just another iteration. We might come back in two weeks and it could be upside down or whatever, so please not working through this. But as we shared when Bray was here, we wanna give the board some updates on some of the thoughts that we're thinking of. So, I think, I'm gonna start with Hales Corners Elementary, I think, is that the right one I have right there? Yeah, so if you can take that one and zoom in a little bit, Kathy, and it's a huge file, so, because it's of the Google Earth piece of it here. So if you look to the, to the right side of the doc, the document there, this is the parking lot piece of it that I wanna share most with you. Because I think that's critical to some of our initial conversations. And Lori's been, Lori joined us for the previous meeting and I think almost this whole meeting this last time.
Sure, the God cell's on top and.
Correct, so Janesville is on the bottom, yep. And so yellow is the new construction, so.
As much as I don't wanna do this, I, I made this first.
Hannah!
Oh, Hannah.
Come on, turn the numbers.
So, this is where the nineteen forty-eight section is in the building right now, it'll be gone. And so, that's God cell up there, so this parking lot right here is for staff. We talked about this last time, and one of the concerns are, we have about seventy-eight staff members at Hales Corners Elementary, but we only have about thirty-six parking spots. So just by doing that, we know that some boats will be on the street automatically. So our goal is to make sure that all of our staff have parking spots to eliminate some of that. Our other concern is to try to keep parents off from God cell whenever possible. So, the screen space is not necessarily less, it's not quite to scale yet, but what we're creating, so here's Janesville. The traffic flow comes here, here's the drop-off. You have some questions right now, and I know why you should, so just hold those there, because you're like, why are we dropping off at the back of the building? So just hold off a little bit on that. And they come back out from here. So this elongates this entire part of it to get more traffic off from Janesville, keep the flow going and continues. If you wanted to at this point, so all of the parking spots here that are there, you know, are all facing towards Janesville if you come in them. Okay, so if you wanna come, you're gonna come in here and park. And then what you're gonna do is you're gonna come out. So this truly on the outside is to keep the traffic flow, parents who are there, and you're not worrying about people who are coming in and parking and all of that. So a lot of parking places, all of our staff will be able to park over here and get them off here, it keeps all of our parents here. And the thing I should probably point out is, this is now the new front entrance of Hales Corners Elementary. This is truly the front of the building facing Janesville, not God cell. So when the staff are back here and they come in, they would come in what would be called the back of the building, as a lot of staff do in the building. It keeps the parents and the traffic coming in the front of the building. And sort of keeps that traffic separate. Right now, while the front of the building is over here, and we're telling parents not to park on God cell, but yet that's the front of the building and there's no parking for them on God cell. It just seems very contrary to that. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but that's why having our guests and visitors here. There is an entry right here, and that would be where our four K drop-off is, we'll talk a little bit more, but our four K rooms are gonna be here. So when parents, because remember, we don't have transportation for four K. When parents are coming and dropping off here with the sidewalk, this is where the four K drop-off and pickup is in terms of that. So this is basically parent pickup, here's the front of the building, so if they're coming in and going to the front of the building, we're keeping all of that separate. We're keeping it away from God cell. And we're keeping our buses and our staff really toward what now is God cell, which would be the back of the building. So this is all parking and traffic flow to get it off from there, so that's what that piece of it is right there, if that makes sense.
Is four K start time the same as the rest of the kids?
Yeah.
It is. And that's not gonna, that's not gonna.
And then parking the rest of the staff, so, yeah.
That's not, that's not gonna cause a tram, a jam, because you could quick start, stopping early there?
Yeah, and we also have two traffic lines.
There's two lanes, one go by right by, okay.
Yeah. So, in terms of the traffic piece of it, makes sense. In terms of, again, Lori's been part of trying to, I mean, it's hard to imagine that we really, this is not parking. I mean, so if you're thinking about how much we're currently using in terms of how much we're gonna gain, it's almost doubling the amount of flow that there. There's also in the other drawing, the potential of even adding more parking over here if we needed to, so you can comp the spaces if you want. Again, the iterations will change, so, but one of the biggest things that you will notice here is the front of the building is flipped from God cell to Janesville.
And why are we making that exception for the four K? Because it's closer to their school, to their room?
Yeah, and because of parent drop-off being right there, because right now, and Lori can talk to you, like how four K doesn't work right now and the challenges we have, we don't really have that work. Because they get dropped off in the back of the building right now.
So the nice thing about this model, it's similar to what's happening at, at Edgerton, has a separate place for their K four to be dropped off. That kind of keeps them out of the flow, which is great if you're parents of K four only. If you have kids in a couple of different grades, what this does for us is it gives us that fast lane, if you will, for the K four only. But it also keeps them in a really safe, secure, their own entrance away from the other. You know, we're, we're bringing in typically at least, out of cars, at least three hundred kids at the start of the day or the end of the day. So, it keeps them funneled in a place that will secure a smaller location for themselves. And it would also include the early childhood students who come in the morning. And some parents choose to not take the special ed bus, have your child take the special ed bus, so it'll give them a nice secure entrance as well.
Page four.
What is the, is the gray, is that say playground, what is the gray and the brown?
Yeah, so I think this is a model we went up with, so.
I could just walk up there and look.
No, you go with, so some is green space, some is playground, soft playground.
And they're, they're squares, but they will be flexible.
So there's a tree right here that we are done with, that was one of my big concerns, if you know, Hales Corners Elementary, there's a huge tree right here, and I don't want that to be touched. So I sort of got a little obsessive with making sure we stayed in the tree, but it's a really huge tree and there's a lot of shade. So this will get modified, this is still very, this is hardscape playground, if you will, here, and here's the soft playground right here. There's some dumpsters and sheds and whatever here, but this changes that obviously from where that is. One of the other things that you will see is this courtyard, which is actually pretty large when you look at, remember, this is the gym right here, so if you're trying to look at the space or comparison aside. This will become a, a, a playground for really any of our students, we're probably our earlier primary grade in terms of that, K four, K five, first, could even put second out there, because it will be able to do that too. So this creates another play space, it is contained within the walls because of, of where it is here, but it also will be considered another play space. So this is soft playground, if you will, and this is what's hardscape, and that really becomes important when it's wet and muddy and the kids need a place that they can't go on the grass and all of that. So, wanted to make sure that we had that in terms of the space. So that is outdoor hardscape, if you wanna call it, and that's soft playground. The answer with those boxes.
Yeah, and I'm sure I'm getting ahead of myself to the question, but are we going to repurpose some of the better playground equipment?
Yep, that's the plan, as long as it's safe and it meets specs, that was asked right away, so, yep.
Kathy, can you go to page four of the diagram, because I think two and three are, wait, that, yep, good. Great, this is the one, Lori?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you look at this space, and again, we're still working on some of the spaces. This is the new construction, and so we have K four and art and then K five. And so that courtyard I just pointed out now is that white shaped that's in there. So that's what the new space is, and way off to the right is where that entrance is for K four, so they would come right in and can go to their room, it's not like they're having to walk all over it. In the bottom right of the diagram is where the new main office will be. And that's, so we're able to purpose that into having a secure vestibule right there. So where you come into the gym in the back of the building will be that secure vestibule. And then you'll have to go to the main office there, Lori's office will be there, counselor, social worker, as typically you would have it. So that's the secure vestibule, we have a chance to make that front of the building look a little bit more presentable from Janesville Road at the same time. Because right now, as you know, it's not the most presentable thing from that piece of it. But really from a secure piece of it and have people, and even the kids who get dropped off in a secure place, like we do in all of our other buildings, have that space. And Hales Corners Elementary doesn't have that. And when we looked at the construction and the amount of cost that we would have to do to repurpose that, it was quite expensive to do that. So from a lot of different perspectives, this makes sense from the public usage, because you can keep that entry, the parking lot where you want them to enter is closer to that part of it and gets them off from God cell. And so those are the instructional spaces that we're looking at right now. We do have some within the building, you know, some gradation things, if you've been in the building, there's partial stairways and all of that stuff. So we're able to adjust some of the slope, there is some ramps that you'll see in yellow as we switch out of the one portion there right outside of the current cafeteria. But, so we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, toilet facilities for our four K, they don't currently have them in the classroom, that's a priority for some of our four Ks. How do we do that for five K, what does that space look like? That hallway will be that, is where the students will come out after lunch to go to outside recess, so there's a couple of different ways we could do that. So this is our current plans, there's a lot of stuff that goes into all of this, but this is the current layout, if you will. With both outdoor space, parking, and then some of the, the spaces within here that Lori's working through and assigning some of those things to, so.
What's planned for Lori's office and?
Yep, she's, so, yep, so down at the bottom right corner is the very main office, and then her office is right next to that.
No, the old stuff, the old.
Oh, that's a great, that, do we have early, where did we end up with that? Early childhood, is, we repurposed special ed? Speech and language special ed, so we just repurposed that in terms of that. And then, yeah, early childhood across the hallway. And then the current health room, so we're gonna move the, the health room up closer to the front of the building, because if you have a sick child or something like that, it'll be closer there. And then the, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, but the current health room used to be the old teacher's work room, and now that will become a teacher's work room, again, lounge area for them, a staff room. Which is nice, because it's sort of in the middle of that back building, it has a restroom within there and in terms of a copier, things that they can use in that part of the building too. And there will also be then, that other point in the, in the main office for them to use, so.
Will you pick over the entrance, the old entrance?
In the back, well, that'll be the staff entrance. Because the staff from where their parking lot is, they would come in off in the parking lot and they would come in God cell. So I, I don't know that we would change anything with that part of it, they would fob in and that's where the staff would come in then. Because that's where their parking lot is. There will still be some staff who park in the other part of it and they can come in the front, but one of the staff parking lots, they could come in the back through God cell. But it's keeping other traffic, parents and that, because right now, that's where the, that's where they have to enter the building. So why would you park somewhere else and then go all the way around to God cell? So, we're planning to talk with the village soon. Couple things, we had a curious question, is, does the address of Hales Corners Elementary change now? Right, because it's where the front entrance is, so will it not be a God cell address, will it now be a Janesville Road address? And what does that do? And then, in terms of parking, because I know that there is a concern right now about all the traffic and the residents there, as we continue to hear over the years, we wanna let them know that this change should alleviate some of those concerns and tell them to be patient, that, you know, in a year and a half, that.
If you so choose to do this.
If this is where, correct, correct. That's been, you know, again, whatever we can do, because we're limited on, you know, what we can do with side streets, that's, that's not us, that's the village, so. So that's the current iteration, again, I can't say that enough. This isn't going out there to bid today, so.
And where does the, the safe and secure part come in when you have three active entrances?
It's the same way with any of our other buildings right now, Edgerton has multiple entrances when you think about that. But this one creates a secure vestibule that is public and present, and all of the stuff that we put in there is gonna be very open in terms of that, the glass doors that you come in. I mean, there's stairs right now, we have to make those more ADA accessible, but that part of it, in terms of, right now, there's a little vestibule that's hidden behind bricks that's on a side street, so in terms of that. So that's staff only, we do have our video surveillance cameras that were, that we have in all of our entrances, but Edgerton too, the staff, while they can come in the front, there's still the, the one hundred sixteenth street entrance, and then staff still coming, there's another entrance to Edgerton also, so.
That are fobbed.
That are fobbed, right, so there's not a, people, unless you're a staff member, you're not coming in there, so.
Oh, what is the plan for the buses? Is that gonna be through the parking lot?
No, they'd still be in the God cell.
They would still in God cell, right, so that keeps.
And then having the kids walk down?
Yeah. So still preliminary on that, but it, it resolves, I think, a lot of the traffic things that Lori's been dealing with or that she's been talking about in terms of that. And if we're gonna create that parking lot and then still have people walk all the way to back of the building, that's what detracts them from doing that right now, is like, well, you want me to park here, but I still gotta walk to the whole different part of the building, like that doesn't make sense, so. The other file that I gave you was the middle school, I just wanted to share the middle school piece of it with you. And we've had our teachers who, they worked a little bit on themselves, they've had some ideas about, they're sort of embracing the STEM thing, had some ideas of, right now, we're sort of in a house system over there. Was this the one? No. Yeah, this one, yep, can you zoom in a little bit? So, this is the first floor at the middle school. And the part that's in MOB there is the current sixth science classrooms. And so we're looking at the spaces that we're using and how we might use them differently instead of just rebuilding sixth classrooms. So talk about curriculum, talk about spaces and that. So you see, we're also utilizing one of the family consumer science spaces that's right there and a special ed classroom. I think I shared with you before, we're not short classrooms in the middle school, so that gives us some flexibility when we're wanting to move programs. It also gives us some place to hold classes during some construction this spring. So we have some classrooms that are just not being used over there, and so it does give us some flexibility. So where the eighth grade is, in the upper right corner, that's where we would put, the, the one lab that's there has the potential for adding some things that are unique to, to some of the science in that level. Storage room, so the, the spaces that you see there are having some flexible seating. There, there are six distinct classroom learning spaces in there, but yet they have some spaces.
But, talking with the science teachers, they have a need for students to do some breakout work. So these little things, they're probably, they say S G I on here, which is small guided instruction. So if you have, go to kids, six kids who are working on a science project together, they just, they can come in these rooms here. So here's a classroom, 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 classroom. This space out here can also be used as a classroom in which they share it. This would also be a great place to have community presentations or teacher present, or parent presentations in the evening, because this is all open when you come in here, yet it sort of looks like it's contained. So if you were gonna hold a parent presentation instead of in the cafeteria right now on cafeteria tables, which isn't super convenient down there, another place to offer that is with the chairs and tables right here in this space. If you wanted to, creating some possibilities of even opening this up. So it does give some classroom spaces that are very distinct classroom spaces with labs, they would have cortisol and water and the stuff that they have that's in there. And this up here has got some unique lab stations around the.
This up here has got some unique lab stations around the outside. They're a little bit different that you see there. So, stealth guided study rooms, because the teachers felt that was really important for kids who are doing some projects that might want to come in there. But also can use a lot of this space up here, because it's just sort of grouping and regrouping kids. They aren't just all sitting at tables and chairs at any given time. So, the different bit of a layout. The science teachers also thought that it would be very helpful as we move forward that we actually move some of our math classrooms to the first floor. So, this really becomes a science and math area, a STEM area. And upstairs, we have our humanities, our social studies, English Language Arts, and then we have all of our elective classes up there. So, then it gives them some options and opportunities to work together, because those two classes are blocked in a time period. It would also alleviate some of the hallway traffic when students are finished or instead of going to a whole different part of the building. So, this is one of the layouts that we're looking at, instead of just the traditional classroom that's there and looking at what science labs would need and what our middle school science curriculum is doing. And I think it, trying to be aware of how we can also make it accessible for community groups. Because I didn't realize it myself until I looked how much our middle school is used for outside community groups. I always just think it's the community boardroom or high school. But we have a lot of groups that use the middle school and that we really don't have, other than going all the way up to the second floor, which is not very DNA accessible. So, this would make it on the first floor, and cafeteria tables also are not the great place to hold a lot of meeting for folks if you have to stay there. So, that gives us some options in keeping it there. So, working with our science teachers, I think they meet again next week and sharing and getting their ideas on what that space looks like, so.
So, you're telling me no more secret hallway?
Yeah, any hallways that you haven't seen or explored yet, Kevin, you better do it soon, or they might be gone.
There's that secret science hallway.
Yeah, there is that corridor that will disappear. But there, if you look at that floor plan, what's amazing is there are tiny little rooms and nooks and crannies of things that just exist, that are just crazy spaces, so. Sometimes you don't even know how to get to some of those spaces, so.
Great.
So, that graph that Bray gave us as far as start times and finish times on a big piece, is that?
Still on, yep, yep. Plans to talk about construction model in early July and then move forward on what that looks like. But yep, we're still on, they're continuing to create iterations and design it. And then, once we get the layouts, because we'll get different, I think we're starting to really hone in on this, because then, before they, we have to decide on this big pieces before they're able to bring in their engineers, before they start bringing in, you know, plumbing and HVAC, and where do we want the electrical and mechanical stuff and that, so.
But then, the debate about when to bring in a construction manager is now or later? What, when is, where are we at with that?
So, July ninth, the plan is to have the board have that conversation to look at that. And I think, I'm feeling even more like after this last Thursday's meeting with Bray and really figuring out, like, as we're seeing this process, like, when does it make sense for us to bring in somebody for that whole checks and balances, the oversight? What percentage of these do we want to get done before we bring in somebody to sort of make sure that, you know, all of the parties, we're staying in budget before we get too far out of scope, even with some of the design ones? So, that's coming up shortly, that's our next. We feel like we're getting to a place where we're feeling good on some of our designs, but we're still far away from, I mean, they're still pretty basic yet.
Is there any concern or thought as far as the openness in that one corridor regarding noise level in the classrooms in the hallway?
Yeah, a little bit, but not, I mean, the teachers are really getting, because right now, what they're using is, they're using that space, and again, you can control who's in the small guided study, who might want to as a group. And if you think about science, like, they're building a lot of stuff, and right now, it gives them that flexibility, but they can also control that to some extent too. And I think as they went to the elementaries to see some of the block space and how they're able to do it, I think they're much, they're feeling much more confident that that's not an issue. And they can control it, because we still have contained spaces there. It's sort of like, you know, maybe some students can't quite.
Yeah.
Handle that yet, but we start to do that. Those who can and are working on a project have that space to spread out and go out there, and maybe you not quite yet.
So, yeah, as Lisa said, we, the July ninth meeting, and we're going to do this under nonsense, but we can touch on it now, that July ninth, we'll do this normal workshop meeting. So, it'll be recorded, so the information will be out there for the public. We'll have Bray here, we'll discuss the options, try to see if we can come to some sort of consensus to bring back on the 23rd of Ove, on a model to go forward with it, so that this way, they can have some direction going forward with Bray. That'll be in July.
All right, so then, I'm just going to tee up B and C, since Lynn, you're listed for both, but seven B is micro credential and district dashboard, and seven C is GT programming update.
We, yeah, we wanted to talk a little bit about micro credentials and the system now that we've got one year, kind of coming up on one year under our belt as far as how it all went and where we are currently and what we're looking at moving forward. So, if you recall back, last year, we came up with the micro credential idea when we were really faced with having to develop a compensation model, because we had been without a compensation model for quite some time. Post Act 10, we really didn't move in the direction of having a formal compensation model. So, we had had a lot of attempts at getting something together and started talking with some neighboring districts, and a lot of school districts are starting to look at things like the micro credentialing system, because it really is looking at professional development, and how do you kind of acquire some professional development and have teachers still maybe compensated or have some compensation tied to the move through the professional development process? So, the next frame here is, what we were looking at is, it's beyond a compensation model. We're really looking at a talent management framework. You know, what makes Whitnell going to be like a destination district? And how will we get the best people to come here? How will we get them to stay? And when they are staying, how do we develop their talent while they're here? So that we, we get their best work out of them, and they are happy with their best work working within the Whitnell system. Before we came up with this model, go to the next one, Kathy. Before we came up with this model, this was our historical context. We had years and years and years, we don't know when this all started, with the old steps and lanes and credits, and you had to get your, your five credits every six years. And after you turned in your five credits, you would just automatically move down for living and breathing another year, and then over for having more credits. And you would kind of do the step in lane thing all the way through. That was historically the model. And then, once 20 Act 10 came in and said, we're going to kind of retool a lot of our systems, we just stayed put. So, in lieu of any kind of formal compensation model, it was just basically moving with the CPI every year. So, CPI would dictate whatever increases there were. Then we came into last year, and we pulled in this micro credential model. And so, we're looking at really having professional learning and development rewarded through, you know, some job embedded opportunities for all of our teachers. So, if we go to the next one, these are buckets that everyone's come to know and love. Based on what we see here in Whitnell and just education in general, and in tune with what our students need, these are the six priority areas that Whitnell has identified, along with a lot of other school districts. I think we're the only one that calls them buckets, though. And these are the big umbrella topics that kind of house a lot of our best practices. So, our standards and targets and curriculum is one bucket of information, and there's a lot of learning to be done there, grading, assessing, reporting, et cetera. So, these, these six areas are really our big high priority areas. We're really looking for people to have some solid understanding and foundational, foundational understandings and fundamental workings as they move through their educator roles. Once we decided we were going to go this micro credential route, a lot of the work began last spring. And we created a micro credential guidebook, because what we wanted to provide for our teachers is, within those six bucket areas or topic areas, we wanted some subtopics that teachers would need maybe further development in. So, we went two ways. We went online and looked through a site called Digital Promise. It's run by Bloomboard. And Digital Promise is an online learning micro credentialing system. You can do it for pay, but most of the items you can do are for free, and you just get a certificate at the end saying that you've engaged in this professional development and professional training. So, we went and looked at Bloomboard, and Bloomboard, or Digital Promise, does have a lot of the topics that we were looking for, along the lines of personalizing learning and rubrics and all those kinds of things. So, if you wanted to look up Digital Promise, it's a really very, very comprehensive site. So, we used some of their coursework as a micro credential possibility, and then we developed some in-house, just based on need. This is just the snapshot of our cover and the table of contents of the micro credential guidebook. This is in our staff folder for teachers to access. So, anytime that we come up and say, you know, it's time to think about what you want to create or develop, or what do you want to sign up for, they can go through this course catalog and kind of look at what's, what they might be interested in to further their knowledge. We, within, we have also then attached a dollar amount to each one of those micro credentials. So, based on the depth of the work that's going to happen and how, how much impact it's going to have on a teacher's practice, we have assigned a dollar amount to it. So, gone through, done the amount of work, done, you know, what's going to be tied to it, you know, how deep is it really going to be? So, they run in range anywhere from $100 per micro credential to our biggest ticket item right now is $600. So, once teachers decide that they are going to engage in one of these, then we have an application process, and they fill out an application, they submit the application, and then we have a process that goes beyond that. So, the next slide. Besides just going and choosing a micro credential out of that catalog, educators also have the option of creating their own micro credential. They can say, hey, I have this idea for a micro credential, or my team does. And we have a create your own form that they can make a special application and apply to have their own micro credential considered. They can use graduate coursework. Some people are still taking graduate coursework. If they're going for reading certifications or administrative certifications. So, in the old system, it used to be, if you're doing some of those college credits, you just turn them in, and then you get some kind of compensation for them. Here, we're saying you can use that, but it's going to form the basis of your micro credential work. So, you're going to get a little bit more in-depth with the work behind your grad work, and how does that frame out into a micro credential? And they can also, finally, we have a form where they can make suggestions for future micro credentials. So, they can say, you know, maybe they don't want to create their own right now, but they can say, hey, we have this idea, we see a need, so here is our idea for a micro credential. And then, the people who are working with the micro credentials will all sit together and say, okay, let's, let's look at developing a micro credential along these lines.
Are you getting any of those?
We are actually getting more people creating their own than people submitting just ideas, which I thought would be the other way around, where people wouldn't really know how to go about creating their own, but they'd say, hey, you create it, but it's actually been the other way around. There've been a lot of create your own, so, yep. So, then, once we have the applications come in, there's applications when we're looking at, you know, what are you applying to do? And then, people engage in that work, and at the end of that timeframe, they submit their work. And we have a teacher verification committee. The teacher verification committee works with both aspects. So, when applications come in, the teacher verification committee will sit together. They'll go through all the applications. We have a criteria checklist that's pretty comprehensive as far as what we're looking for and what we're expecting to see, what kind of elements each application should include. And they go through and make comments on the forms and then say, yes, you are approved to work on this micro credential. Or typically, we don't ever say you are denied, but we say, give us more information or we need some clarification on some points. So, the verification committee is in charge of that application process, of approving or asking for more requests, or saying this is not fitting into our scheme of things at this time. And the verification committee also works on the other end. When people have gone through, done the work, there are two cycles that teachers can go through. They will look at the completed micro credentials, and again, go through and start looking at the criteria for, for completion. We have a bunch of forms, here's just little screenshots as the committee's going through of tracking who's verified, who needs revision. So, we can, you can go in this folder anytime and look to see where everyone is in the process. And then, once it's been completed, submitted, verified, there's always that corresponding dollar amount has been attached to the micro credential. And then, this is just a little tiny piece of this form, but the person who has submitted for the micro credential compensation amount gets a form back saying you have been verified, or if you've not been verified. And then, we will always allow them a chance to resubmit if it looks like it's something that's not complete. Per the criteria that we've put forward, we'll just say, please resubmit it by the state. And if they have questions, they can contact me or someone on the, on the committee. So, this is, we've been, now that we've been starting to get some of these numbers a little bit more solidly, this is compensation results, so Mike can go into this, because he threw all these together.
Yeah, so, this has been very interesting, I think, to kind of just see how this has played out after year one. So, these are all the applications that were out there throughout the 17, 18 school year that would either get applied midway through the 17, 18 school year or affect your 18, 19 compensation. So, you know, for the most part, those number of educators, I took out our current retirees, you know, not going to be around next year. Took out some people that we already knew were leaving at this point in time. But you get a, you get a sense of the breakdown. You know, no micro credentials, if you did not apply for anything, the average increase, percentage increase amongst those 38 educators at 1.16. You can see through the initial educators, remember, those are those people that come in, we're not expecting them to do full out micro credentials. They're still trying to figure out, you know, what's the story here at Whitnell? I'm in a new building, I'm in a new profession, maybe for the first time. They get the $1,000 increase after their first year. And so, that's, there was 32 of those. Some had a partial FTE, which is why you have less than $32,000. But their average increase at 2.07. I wanted to break out those who just did one, not just, but had a micro credential versus multiple micro credentials. If you did one micro credential on top of what possibly could be our universal allowable increase, our UAI, came to 1.9% increase amongst those educators. Those who did multiple micro credentials, anywhere between, who had applied for anywhere between two or more throughout this school year and into next school year, that's the overwhelming majority applied for that would receive a greater than a 3% increase on average to their compensation, some more, some less, but that's the average across. So, I, I think the model is doing what we wanted to do. It's a way to spread out the allocated dollars to those who are putting in the professional development into the, into that growth. We're still giving that increase to initial educators that is right around that CPI number with, with our initial educators. And those who, who needed the year or didn't want to do it or want to see how it was going to work out, or whatever the case is, they still receive something, but it's, it's not as much as our people who were engaged in professional development opportunities. So, I think if we wanted to draw out these numbers before we had this, this would almost be exactly what we would hope the results would, would kind of showcase.
So, Act 10 doesn't state, it states that you can give up to the, you can give the CPI.
Up to.
Up to.
Can negotiate up to.
Right. It doesn't say you have to give that, right?
No, you don't.
Camera's not.
I was just shaking my head.
Is there a ceiling to the number of micro credentials they can get? I mean, how much can someone, can they go up 3% each year if they keep doing the work for it?
So, basically, we haven't put a cap on the number of micro credentials that you can do. We ask that people use common sense and good judgment, because there, some of them are pretty rigorous. So, when they go, when they are applying, we also ask principals to just sort of vet through the list of people who are applying, just to make sure that what people are applying for is in alignment with what they actually need. So, we wouldn't want someone to take on micro credentials if they are struggling already in a certain area. We wouldn't want someone to take on too many or too few. That being said, it's hard to define too many, too few, because you do have some people that can have the time, can juggle their time, they can really manage to take on multiples, whereas some people just don't have that capacity. From a financial standpoint, I think we said there was really no.
No, from a financial standpoint, if you're applying for it, we know that it's going to be in the upcoming budget, and we're going to budget accordingly for that. You know, i- if you find that you've taken too many, or whatever the case is, and you don't do it, it doesn't, we don't have to adjust the budget in any way. The budget is, is set and can accommodate all the requests.
So, then you, you pay out all the credentials and initial educators, and that's what, what's left goes to the people that choose not to get involved?
It's part of the universal level increase calculation, correct?
Well, to be, everybody gets that. Not just the people who are left, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, everybody, not, not even.
No.
After the micro credentials are paid out across the board, that amount is then divvied up accordingly amongst everybody regardless.
Not just.
Everybody gets this universal allowance, cost of living, whatever you want to call it. And some people, that's all they get, because they're not doing micro credentials.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, a person who did multiple micro cred. So a person who did multiple micro credentials, I was about to say, a person who did one micro credential, got 1.99 for doing that, or total package?
Total package is 1.9.
Including your...
So you got to figure those, that one micro credential, you're, you're talking about possibly, I did a book study, $200 to your base, to all the way through the seminar piece, that's $600. I mean, you're, and then you're probably applying that to people's salaries who are established in the district. That's where that 1.9 kind of washed.
So last year, Mike, just to put those percentages in context, what was CPI last year?
1, 1.26 last year.
Okay, so to put that into context, I mean, 1.26, but that was, that's not on a person's salary, so... But that's how much the pool was of the dollars that there are.
So does that person get that, does that increase goes to next year as well?
Yes, it's a, and so that's, we're going to get into that, but yes, it is applied to base pay. You get that each, each year, that's just part of your base now. It's part of the base wage calculation moving forward as well. As we add that in, that grows the base wage up.
That's a perfect segue to the next slide.
It is. You're welcome. Yeah, I mean, thanks, Glenn.
So, there, there's a few overarching things that we've observed. And, and then just the responses that we are thinking of as we're making these observations. And the first one is exactly what we're talking about. We have had people sign up for micro credentials, and then once they're in it going, this is a lot of work for 300 bucks. This is 300 bucks, I'm doing all this work. And we, we keep having to re-explain that it's not a $300 stipend. We're not giving you $300 for the work. It's $300 that is attached to your base wage. So if you stay in the district 10 years, it's actually $3,000, you know. So it's that kind of thinking where in the moment, it's always not, it's not always lining up in their minds that this is actually an attachment to your base pay that's going to stick with you forever. So we just keep explaining that, and I think people do understand it. I think when you're in the muck of it and doing a lot of the heavy lifting, it feels a little like, whoa, why am I doing all this? So we have to just sort of keep throwing them a little light observer, saying, no, no, it's actually going to stay with you and it's going to be sustainable. We have had a lot of teachers express appreciation for the options that micro credentials provide and the option, the ability to get some compensation for doing this work. And it's, a lot of it is work that if, if they're really working to stay very current and relevant, it's a lot of work that they would probably be doing anyway. It's just a little bit more in-depth, a little more above and beyond. So I think that they're liking the fact that if they're working hard to stay relevant and stay current and really kind of be on the cutting edge of understanding what's coming our way in education, that they're seeing some reward for that. So, and the response to that is just, we're going to continue, have to continue to look to expand. Now, as we start outgrowing the first iteration of courses that are offered, we're going to have to start saying, okay, what are the next level for some of those courses? What are some new courses? And we'll have to keep, be, be in a continuous development stage, I think, phase. And then, the, the third one has been a bit of a struggle. Some people are looking at this not in the spirit in which it was necessarily intended. While we want it to be a compensation and a reward for the professional development activities and intentions, some are still looking at it, well, I'm just going to jump through this hoop and then I'm going to get my $600. I'm going to just do this and get my $600. And some of that is coming out in the work submitted, where it's not necessarily like deep-thinking work. Somebody just did it for the sake of doing it. And those are the ones that the verification committee will then sit and then say, here is the clarification, here's where we need more information, or here's where you need more depth, or, or more evidence of your learning. And those will typically get kicked back. And that's just come through the grapevine as well, you know, just the teachers thinking, some teachers, not all. And I'm sure this is the minority of thinking like, well, I'm just going to do it, and then I'm going to walk away, and it's not going to be a sustainable practice. So the response to that is that we, we have to keep working to reframe the learning as the expectation, and not the old, the old-fashioned seat time, where we used to just like have seat time for college courses and then get that, that pay if you submitted your, your credits. So we're expecting that of our students. We're trying to move away from, it's, it's seat time, and you just sit here and do your stuff, and then you move on. We're trying to reframe that with learning, and so we're going to have to do it with ourselves too, in the adult world, so. And I think the other response to that is just, we have to make sure that we're sustaining our rigor of the verification committee expectations. And the verification committee has gotten pretty good at, you know, saying, you know, I think we went through this really quickly. We didn't give it a lot of deep thought. We're going to kick it back and, and have a second crack at it. And then, we're all struggling with the bottom one. So the distinguishing between what is just a normal professional growth expectations and micro credential work. There's a very fine line between what are we just expected to do as educators? You know, when we're working with curriculum, we're working with developing assessments, we're working with, how do we best get at, you know, learning for students and pull that out of them, and then, you know, get the evidence together? So some of that is deep work, but then where does the just day-to-day expectation stop and the micro credentialing begin? And we've, we have a pretty good handle on it, but every once in a while, we get into those sticky situations where we're like, is this significantly beyond the everyday work? And, you know, so we're still having those conversations. And teachers too, struggle with, you know, well, I'm going to work on curriculum, can that be a micro credential? While curriculum is just what we do to update ourselves, so that's not necessarily going to be a micro credential. So we just have to keep the conversations going around, around that, and continue to provide some clarity. And then as we move forward, I should have made that a little lighter colored, sorry about that. So we'll continue to examine and analyze the participation, the course applications and submissions to make sure. And we've started to do that already, you know, which things are very popular, which things are just sitting out there and nobody's really accessing them. And maybe, you know, do we want to continue that? Do the needs to be changed? Oh, look at that, it magically changed. And then revising or adding course offerings as deemed necessary to support professional development. We'll continue to make tweaks to the overall process. I mean, even the verification committee, that's, it sounds simple, but it's pretty heady stuff when you sit down with all of these, you know, tons of applications or submissions, and you're sitting there with all of the checklists, and people are sitting at groups of three at a table and like trying to, you know, verify each other's work and corroborate, you know, what we are expecting and calibrate our expectations. In that process, we found a few like, like gross inefficiencies the first time around, where we're like, hold it. We're, we're like duplicating and duplicating work, so how do we streamline the process? And then we found a couple of things, we're like, we didn't even think about this part of the process back up. And so there's been a few re-entry points as we tweak. And this coming year, we have a lot of plans to be collaborating with neighboring districts so that what we're doing in micro credentialing and deeper professional learning, sometimes when you're in the muck of, you know, the day-to-day stuff, you don't realize that this is like the outside world too. So we've got some plans with some neighboring districts to go and see what they're doing. Not necessarily with micro credentials, but with a lot of the micro credential work that we're doing. Some districts are already engaging in that work. So we'll have some, some plans to, to get some collegial things going there. And then we'll just persist and clarify, we'll keep clarifying and persisting with our district goals so we keep increasing the teacher understanding of, of the importance of the micro credential work and the relevance that it has to student outcomes. Because at the end of the day, we're really just trying to ask them to continually deepen their practice in the name of students.
And that, that expectation isn't just confined to Whitnall, right? Other districts expect their teachers to continue to grow and expand their knowledge and stay ahead of the curve, right? So we're not expecting our teachers to go above and beyond what they would be expected of if they're working in another district, right?
No, correct. Yep.
I think, if I could add a piece, we, we have a hire that's come from a school district that has implemented micro credentials for now several years. And talking with him on the phone to, to bring him to Whitnall was, was enlightening about where micro credentials can eventually go and eventually be the, the pride that he took in the micro credentials that he had earned at a previous district. And knowing that we had a, you want to make sure that we recognize those micro credentials that he had at a, at another district. Because there was a, a pride in just knowing that these are things that I quote-unquote collected, and I want to make sure that you continue to see that I did that work. And I think that's something that, you know, talking to this individual, that we go, okay, we, we can get there. We, we will get there as far as what the system can really be and what it can mean for our, for our educators.
But that also brings up a challenge, because we're not the first to do this. And as hiring practices change, and we have staff turnover, if you have someone from a district that's had micro credentialing, it's evolved further than what we are. So then, what does that person do and how do they stretch in a district that's behind?
Yeah, and that's a great question, because we had a long conversation about, well, then perhaps you come here, and we've got this create your own option, and perhaps you blaze a few paths for us and help us. And, you know, and so we can, we can benefit from someone like that too, because he's very eager to come and say, well, if I'm going to work in this area, could I create a micro credential that would help other contents? Like, hmm.
Please, yeah, if that advances him.
Yes, yes.
As well as us.
Yeah, you want that stretch goal for those, yes, those people coming in especially.
So is there compensation for the people who create a course and teach one? Do they get like credit for doing it if they're the teacher?
So right now, this small committee of just a few people have really been creating the courses ourselves. And just people with areas of expertise have been saying, yes, we'll teach them. As we evolve further down this process, I think we would look at, if you're going to develop like a deep micro credential, there could probably be a micro credential within a micro credential where you're going to gather the, the research and kind of get the materials together and figure out what it would really mean to provide a course for someone and teach the course for someone. So eventually, we will get to that point where we have some, you know, a delineation between you're simply taking the micro credential, or you're actually really developing and teaching and, and making some continuations of that micro credential. The other thing that Kettle Marine was into too is...
Lynn has taught some of them, and because of her, I mean, she, or Jackie has taught some of them. So some of our staff right now, who are at the capacity, are teaching them. It's just not a, I mean, that's part of sort of what they do. So when we get our own teachers who would get compensated above and beyond, then yeah, so. So I do want, I mean, there are people who are in this, we continue to build other people. Or our math coaches who are teaching some of the AVMR stuff. There is compensation for them. I do want to be clear for that, and then they can turn it into micro credentials. So we do compensate those who are teaching. I don't want to leave that out, because there are enough places where we are compensating people above and beyond for teaching the courses, yeah.
Kettle Marine, other systems that are looking at this, the whole micro credentialing thing, like a micro credential is a thing that stands by itself. But there's a whole system that eventually we can start looking at that micro credentials lead up to a credential. So you could follow a micro credential path and eventually be credentialed in one of these topic areas that we have, which would then sort of transfer into being a bit more of a teacher leader, leadership kind of role, and yeah. So it's building capacity within the system, once we really get it going. Other questions?
Onto district dashboard.
District dashboard. So the district dashboard, we no longer see numbers sitting at, what was the magic number last? 88%. And we, we haven't done much with this yet, just because we still, we need a lot of information to happen, and we really need to have our, you know, retreat time in the summer to figure out some of these points. The academic indicators particularly, of which of these are going to be, that we're going to hang on to? Which of these do we not necessarily want or need to see? And there's just some things like, you know, exam, like forward exam, we're not going to know those results yet. So as we're working now, we started filling in the known numbers. So we have like the ACT composite scores going through 15, 16, and 17, 2015, 16, 17. We have the overall score of 2017 of proficiency. Then that would be the proficiency in all four of the ACT subcategories. And then we've got our forward exam, and so you can see down. And, you know, we've been talking about, you can see the imbalance, first of all, with academic indicators versus career and life-ready indicators. And so we want to kind of make this a little bit less lopsided. The academic portion, there's just a lot of considerations where we were looking at one district earlier that didn't necessarily break out ACT, forward exam, third grade reading, eighth grade math. They just said standardized testing and kind of boiled it down to one thing. That's an option. If you want it all delineated specifically, we could. But it was interesting to see the condensation of standardized testing is just one big lump. AP could be in or out, because there's other indicators that, you know, advanced placement, is it the score? We talked about this earlier. Is it the participation? Is it the number of people taking the exam? Is it, you know, how we score collectively? Do we not care about the score? And should we care about the participation in AP? So that's sort of an identity that we have to look through. Algebra II proficiency, again, in, out GPA, in, out. The algebra II and the GPA considerations are sticky right now, because as we are really working through our grading policies, you know, the, the question keeps coming back. If we assign an A in a course, what does that exactly mean? And what, we know what it means to us in-house, what does it mean in congruence with the rest of the world? So there are some things here that we really have to consider in that academic part.
So a couple of things to build off of this. Again, they're just putting it on here so we can see it visually. They're not saying this is what it has to be. They're just putting it out there for us to get a visual as we continue to move forward to building it. Also with that, the dashboard doesn't have to be all these, as Lynn was just saying. We may want to track things that we don't keep on the dashboard, we just keep it offline. That can be in a report format, memo, however we want to do it. We can tailor this. Now, we talked about the ninth, so not all the board members will be there on the ninth. And we've found in the past with different retreats or workshops that if we pile multiple robust topics, by the time you get to the second or third topic, everybody's exhausted. It's nine o'clock, and you're like, yeah, exactly. And you're like, really? We have to make this decision now? So what, what we've considered doing is, because we have to have the conversation on the referendum and the construction manager discussion, we'd like to keep that on the ninth. It's something where if we need to video conference in, that's an easy thing to do. We can have it recorded and do all that. What we'd like to consider doing, because they're having a administrators retreat on the 17th and 18th of July, what we'd like to potentially do is have a meeting on the 16th of July, that Monday, with administrators and the board to work through the dashboard and district goals. We'll create them, work together, because then during the administrator retreat on the 17th and 18th, they'll build more information around what we take out of that meeting. And then potentially, we'll vote on it on the 23rd. Typically, if you remember in the past, we're usually working on our goals in August and September, after they've already, you know, and they're kind of scrambling and the goals are kind of just out there. This will give them the chance to actually build their plans for next year based on the goals that we've collectively set up. So, I don't know, I know this is kind of, look at your schedules, see if you'll all be there on the 16th. We prefer everybody's input there. We'd like to start potentially 5:30, 5:45, get food brought in, do that right at the beginning, and then start 5:45 or 6:00, and just really dive right in and get going on it. No frills, nothing, just get right in, work through this, create the goals, work on the dashboard. And like I said, next two days, administrators will dig through it. They'll send us back what they come out of it. We'll vote on the 23rd. Any thoughts, feedback on either what Lynn said or what I just shared?
So there'll be a special meeting?
It will be. It'll be a data retreat. So it'll be, you know, off-camera. This way, we talked before about the transparency with the referendum process, right? This way, when we have the conversation with Brian, everything, that'll be all recorded. We'll have the data retrieved off, we'll just have the tables set up on the side, and we'll just have a relaxed, informal conversation about it. Sorry, I didn't mean to step up.
No, no, that's good. And just the one thing to keep in mind is that whatever we create in the dashboard, this is what we are just saying to ourselves and the outside world, this is what we value. This is what we really want to, you know, hitch our wagon to. This is what we really want to persist with in terms of data. So there's no hard and fast, the academic indicators get to be long, because those are all just all the tangible things that are out there. When you look at career indicators and life-ready indicators, that's a little squishier right now, because we have to decide, you know, what things do we want to put on there that we really value? And year after year, we want to measure those things and keep boosting those numbers and, and really get deeper and deeper into those aspects.
About for life-ready, the, the American test there, the one that, you know, you have to give the...
Oh, the civics test?
Civics test?
It's interesting.
Yeah, I've not seen anyone go after that one. It's kind of a, everybody has to pass it, so I mean, I'm not sure.
But you have to know, you know?
Yeah?
That's interesting.
How many times it took them to get 100% passed?
I'm not an academic, I'm just suggesting here.
I'm sure we want that on our dashboard. Okay, so that's food for that.
Anything else? Anybody, any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving on.
It's me again.
GT.
Okay, so, um, emojis. Two weeks ago, we did an update for parents of GT students and we had met with them last summer when we were first saying, "Hey, it's going to look different and we're not sure exactly what it's going to look like, but we are, you know, here's what we're tentatively planning and, and trying to achieve through the course of this year." And largely, I think we, we got where we had hoped to go. There were some areas in which we fell a little bit short yet and we'll have to kind of regroup and look at this for coming for twenty eighteen, nineteen. But we really just wanted to give parents an update as to what has happened throughout the year and what things moved as we expected, what things did not move as we expected. So on the second slide there, Kathy, we basically just sort of started with the way we started last year. Oh, do you want me to just hook mine?
There.
There we go. So we had talked about, you know, beginning last year, there were going to be some changes. So we were going to walk away from the, the older title of GT program to have a little bit more active GT programming because program, we were thinking, program, a lot of places have walked away from that. Program just sounds like either you're in or you're out and it's not a live and fluid thing. Programming suggests that we are always in the process of programming and it's not a matter of you're in or you're out. It is just, we're always trying to react and be responsive to what, what people need. We did not have a GT coordinator this year and we moved across the, to the right there. We had an RTI coordinator. We got RTI teams at every building in the district. They'd only been operating formally in a couple of buildings up to this year. People services and coaches all got involved in that RTI process. So with that RTI team approach, we had a more systematic handle on the data that was coming from students in the form of testing and academics and, and behavior too when you went the PBIS route. So we were really trying to be more attentive to where our students were, what data we are collecting, and what to do with the data. And historically, that's where we always fell a little bit short. We would get data and then not know exactly where to go with it or how to react to it. Then we had said, this is often the beginning of the year, we would develop a GT resource guide and we would establish some entrance criteria of the various tiers of programming. We would start to identify different areas of giftedness. We've long been mostly into the academic identifications. We had not been really good at identifying creativity or leadership or visual performing arts. So we wanted to get a little bit more into that. We were going to establish tiered levels of support. We were going to beef up our testing and identification resources. We were going to try and get some flow charts together and figure out how do we serve as students? Because when we had had the one GT coordinator, she sort of did a lot of that stuff, but nobody knew exactly what she did or when she did it or where she did it. And so that was something we wanted to make a little bit more transparent as to how are we going to actually react and who's going to be responsible for what. We also said we would include some resources on the website, including that resource guide, parent resources, links to activities. So most of this stuff has been, has been done. I would say that the one area where we probably fell a little bit short yet was the testing identification resources. We did get some resources, but we still have to find some others that are going to be part of the, like, the other areas, like the creativity. We don't have formal resources there, visual performing arts. And there are things, tests that we can take on and data that we can collect and we do not have those resources yet. We've always largely relied on recommendation. And when you just have recommendation, we fall a little bit short. We tend to recommend people who are like us or connected to us and then we suffer underrepresentation in some of our, in some of our student groups. So, next, we had pulled out this chart and this was the diamond, our RTI diamond. And if you look at this as numbers of students, the middle of that diamond is your general tier-one general instruction. That's your, sort of your universal piece. That's your bulk of students that fall into that category. And as you start making your way to the left in that diamond, you're starting to go the route of the struggling learner. So they move outside that middle edge there and they start moving into a tier-two where they need some extra help in differentiation in a classroom. They get to the far end of that and that's where special ed referrals happen, IEPs are written, then we've got some programming needs that are addressed on that side. Because that is a mandated and heavily funded thing when you get onto the special ed side, that's always had everyone's attention. When you start traveling to the right of that diamond, that's had people's attention, but not nearly with the teeth that the left side has had. So we tried to raise people's awareness all year long of, we've got to be sort of equally balanced on the diamond. And once we start deviating from that middle, we're always drawn to those struggling learners. But we often kind of look at the advanced learners as like, "Well, you're advanced, you're going to be fine. I'm going to go help the struggling learners." And then we are once again imbalanced in the, in the attentiveness of that diamond. So what we did say is that this year, we will, at least for, very least for the tier-three students that are way over on the edge, we are going to write DEPs, which are differentiated education plans. So they have a plan which operates like an IEP that teachers are going to be able to access, be aware of and say, "This student has a DEP." That was typically for the students that looked significantly different in their needs from the tier-two students. And this coming year, we will have learning plans for all students. So every, not everyone will get a DEP, but everyone will have an ILP, an individualized learning plan. Some districts do not really work with tier-one, tier-two, but we committed to that because that was sort of part of that programming model where, you know, tier-one, you could still have advanced learners or accelerated learners that aren't necessarily gifted. And we decided we really would like to acknowledge all of them, at least through really getting better at differentiation and meeting students' needs through what our teachers can provide in the classroom as well as what we can provide outside the classroom. The next thing was just a checklist of what happened. So this is just, we had put out these checklists of like, here's what we're striving to do. And then we just started taking the little boxes and making them checkmarks as we got through them and, and had a handle on them. So all of those things happen in September, October, November, and it goes on to the next slide for November, December through spring. You'll notice at the bottom, there are two unchecked marked things because they are ongoing. So teacher training and classroom differentiation. Because we had had a pull-out person for so long and we'd relied on pulling students out of the classroom, classroom teachers themselves really never flexed those muscles of, how do we really widen the scope of who we can address, who we can attend to in the class? So instead of saying, "I got these kids, but if they're too accelerated, they're going to go with someone," you know, really widening our eyes to how can we meet their needs in the classroom without that pull-out piece? And then the parent engagement council, we really didn't have anybody biting on that all year long. And now, after this last meeting, we do have a healthy number of people that said they would like to be part of our parent engagement council. Name is up for grabs, we'll have to figure out what the name is going to be. So that will be in place for the end of this summer going into the school year. And then next up, we've got some training. We are going to really draw people's attention now to the DEPs which are going to be housed, which are housed in EduClimer. And we're going to make sure that now we have those on a calendar so that they are addressed annually, the same as an IEP would be. And we're going to work with counselors to make sure beginning of the year, if a student has a DEP or an ILP in EduClimer, they need to bring it to teacher teams and make sure that everybody is aware. That's one area where we have historically fallen short, where we've had the plan, but there's not been a really big overt plan to get the plan out. So we've got a plan to get the plan out. District-wide focus on personalizing learning is continuing, so we're really working on that. And then the three down below are not yet here. We are in the process right now of purchasing, purchasing the COGAT, which is the cognitive abilities test. And we are going to administer that starting this year to all third graders because right now, if we're only on a recommendation piece, we're, like we said earlier, we're going to miss a lot of people. And we are probably going to especially miss people that, you know, if I'm going to recommend somebody, I might not be so quick to recommend someone who is not of my disposition, who is not of my culture, who is not of just my circle of whatever. So we want to make sure that we're not missing people just because we are not looking in the right places necessarily. So the COGAT will be our kind of catch-all to make sure that by third grade, we understand who we have on stage for GT. We are developing over the summer, learner profiles for all students, not just GT students. It's going to be for every student in the district. And those will be completed by the end of this summer. And in fall, all teachers will understand how to access the learner profiles. And students are actually going to have a hand in developing those learner profiles beginning of the year. And we're going to create them so that they are housed, again, in EduClimer and travel with the student year after year after year. So they will morph with the student. It's like a digital traveling portfolio. So if a student comes into second grade this fall, they develop their learner profile, they work on it through the course of the year. We're going to say to teachers, "This is not like the old interest survey where you look at it and you kind of use it at the beginning of the year and you throw it away and then it's in the trash by December." This is something that's going to be a live document that we want them to be accessing, both from the student side and the, the teacher side on a regular basis. And then that will travel with that child to third grade and beyond and keep adding to it. So it's kind of fun for a student who's in eighth or ninth or 10th grade to go back and look at what their profile looked like eventually, like back in second grade. And then the last one's a big one. We need to continue to train teachers in differentiation strategies and support practice in classrooms. And that's an ongoing thing between professional development over the summer. Our coaches are also getting trained in it and will train and will be supporting in classrooms. The supporting personnel, we made some changes here. So we have, Ben Williams has been filling many, many roles in the district. We are actually going to place him as a true GT coordinator because what we recognized is the team approach was good for spreading the, the knowledge and having more people aware, but not having that one point person that really was like the overseer of, when is the meeting happening? When is the team getting together? What's the data coming out of the team? Have all the proper communication channels been accessed? That hurt us a little bit. So he is going to serve as that coordinator and he will make sure that everything, it shouldn't say six twelve though. I don't know why it says six twelve. So we'll have to change that. So he's going to be district-wide coordinator. Actually, some of this is not, some of this is old. I'll tell you the changes as they need to happen. Laura Fowle, so most of these people have not changed too significantly. Ben is the big one, just having that point person. The other one that's big for us is down at the bottom. Janelle Swick is our new math coach. And right now, we have her designated six-eight, but she's truly going to be a K-8 math coach. We just want her beginning-of-the-year focus to be at the middle school because we are unrolling the last part of CMP. So we're starting her there. The big deal about her is that she's well-versed in Math Workshop. And Math Workshop is, you might have heard of Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop. It's a system of strategy in the classroom that allows you to bust up your fifty minutes of time or a hundred minutes of time into smaller chunks and actively get to subgroups of students without saying, "Hey, I'm going to work with this group." You go in the corner and like play on DreamBox for an hour because that's not the same thing. But that's what we kind of do for differentiation, like, "You go over here, I'm going to work with this group." But there's a more active way and a more prescribed way of chunking out that time and keeping students involved and active in their learning. So Workshop is kind of the big thing. We have a lot of teachers getting trained on Workshop this summer. A lot of teachers are at CMP training this week in Michigan and she's going to be instrumental in a lot of this and supporting the GT side. She was also a point person, she's coming to us from Cedarburg, so she was a point person for their GT and addressing their math needs through Workshop from the GT lens. This is, oh, the next slide is something that we're tentatively really proud of. We've implemented it a bunch of times. Couple of times, we, the flow chart didn't flow exactly like we thought, but now I think we've got it. We've never had this before where this is in the resource guide and it's online. We will make it more widely known to everybody in a more formal fashion this fall. There's a link on the bottom of the page where it's a nomination form. So if somebody wants to go and nominate or if they just have a question, they hit that link, they fill it out, and the routing process starts. So the blue box is along the bottom. You can see a student is applying, it's a student application, a parent nomination, a teacher nomination, or, or a result of data meetings. So any of those one things can start this whole process and then it just goes up through the chain and people get alerted and forms come out and then teams start forming around the new needs of this student. And the next slide, we just talked about the need for opportunities for all of our students. I mean, this is not GT-specific, but what opportunities are out there? And we've heard loud and clear from our parents, they would like more balance to the sports aspect of Whitnell. They would like to be able to say that we have more, you know, to do with robotics and more to do with digital things and computer science and that kind of thing. So that's the big call right now is, you know, what are we doing for the, the non-sports things? What, what things are out there? And we do have some stuff sitting out there that probably isn't being utilized or accessed as much as we would like either. So that's a little audit that we would like to conduct for this year. Parent Engagement Council, this was a big success this time around because we said, "Hey, we only have two people right now and now we have eight." So, done. And then the last page is just the resource guide and we have resources online on the website for parents, activities, advocacy organizations, summer camps, all kinds of things for them to access. So still a work in progress, for sure, but we're making progress.
What has been the feedback from the parents? Has she, early in the year when things were-
Early in the year, they were really frustrated with us because we weren't moving fast enough and we were struggling to find ways to move faster. So they were frustrated that while we were figuring it out, you know, "What are you doing?" You know, and we're trying to get the ball rolling. So there was a lot of frustration. By the end of the year, we were having people feeling much better because they were, you know, having contact. People were actually coming in and having contact with their students. The coaches were like talking with students. They were being called in for DEP meetings or actually plans. Teams were sitting with teachers saying, "Here's the plan, here's what you need to follow." And then teachers were actually like going back around to coaches or to RTI team members saying, "I need some help, can you..." So there was some, there was better feelings by the end of the year.
So will Ben Williams be dealing with parents? Yeah?
Yeah, I will too. I mean, it won't be him just by himself, but yes, he will be the, the point person. Whereas this year, I think we confused people by having me, Jill, coaches. I mean, there were a lot of points and it got confusing. So I think we just had a one conduit person will help.
What role will the guidance counselors play?
Yeah, if, if you go back to that chart, the flow chart, Kathy, you, but, so this really makes a really prescribed process for who is going to do what. And we, I would say, we have underutilized our counselors in that process because they are the boots on the ground in a building. And we jumped over them this year because they, they've not been like really intensely utilized before, but coming into this year, we're going to explicitly say, they manage the 504 plans for students and make sure that teachers understand those plans, where they live, what they say. So we're going to say your counterpoint to that is the DEPs. So we want counselors to be looking at the DEPs, looking at when those annual meetings happen, convene the teacher teams and be the in-the-building conduit for.
So realistically, say, I know this year, we did the notice with the letters going out to parents about, you know, the notification of whether they were identified as GNT or they were getting the IEP or whatever it was. Realistically, the parents should be able to contact whether it's at the middle school or the high school, reach out to the guidance counselor and say, "I got this letter, can you help explain it to me?"
Yes.
And they should be able to say, "Yes, this is what the letter is."
Yes.
Not say, "All right, I don't really know, let me, let me find somebody to call you back." Realistically, that should be the-
Yep. And well, when the beginning of the year starts, we will sit, Jackie and I'll sit and figure that out and have a meeting and just say, "This is what it is, this is what it means," and make sure that they understand what that is about. This year, that was, that did not happen the way it should have.
So it's been a little, I liked the COGAT. I don't recall that being an instrument that would evaluate the other levels of, of a gifted. I don't remember that being a good instrument for leadership or for creativity or-
Right, it's not. It's going to be the academic and we're going to have to get like the Torrance and the, a couple of those other ones to supplement. That's what I mean by not having those, yeah.
Right, so between finding other instruments and when can that get implemented, clearly you've identified a goal of getting the COGAT purchased for, for this year. Those other aspects sometimes can even show up before third grade. So where, where are those tools going to get plugged in? And then again, with the staff, it's easy to start with academics because that's, that's a stat.
Right.
And you can look at it. But the other, the artistic and the creativity and the leadership is, is not as easy identifiable. So staff training on that piece as well is- So, staff training on that piece as well, is that part of the goal for this year yet, when you're doing the staff training?
Yes, yes.
Or how are you rolling it out for that?
Are you talking...
It's overwhelming, if you, you know, if you haven't seen an instrument before.
Right.
If you don't know how to think of creativity and leadership as a GT quality.
Right.
And you're not used to identifying GT kids in your classroom.
Yep.
How much can the staff take with some of these concepts in one year? And what does that mean?
Well, yeah, it's not going to all happen in one year.
Yeah.
But I think we have to start with, as we did this year, with the awareness pieces of all of it. So, and I've been working with Amy Stenzel to investigate things like the Torrance. We have sort of stolen a lot of stuff from the Ohio website, because they've really got their ducks in a row where it comes to GT. So, we're sort of using them as a guideline and a guidepost for some of these other indicators that are not just, and you're right, COGAT is just our universal, let's catch everybody.
Start.
And when we went to the state conference last November, there was some, some people do it in second grade, and some people do, a lot of them, not just COGAT, and some in third. And people were overwhelmingly moving to third grade, just because there are so many discrepancies now, because students come from just really diverse households. So, they felt that to do it in second grade wasn't even going to really give accurate information, so a lot of people are moving to third grade. Now, as far as those other things, creativity, I think we need to create, I need to create, I think we need to get some information together of those indicators, you know, that teachers can just be looking for, because you're right, I don't think teachers know how to really go, oh my gosh, creativity, this is something that's, looks very, very different. I think some teachers do, but not all, right?
And it's a tough one to teach.
Yep.
I mean, until you've seen it or experienced it, sometimes it's just really hard to realize that's what's in front of you. So, but everyone's going to start somewhere.
Yeah, it's like the process like everything else, yeah. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, on to DSWSA report.
I guess my name is on it this time, yeah. I know. So, we had Senator, Alberta Darling was there, Representative Jamad, the district rep from Senator Johnson's office, a couple of Senator Darling's chief of staff, and then the director of school safety from MPS, who was a former police officer in Milwaukee. And so, they had sort of just talked about their legislative agendas, specifically around mental health and school safety is where they focused it on. You know, and there was a lot of folks in the room that said, okay, you know, this grant is great, but obviously, it's an infusion, it was very focused on some physical factors for your buildings, what about that? And so, what I appreciated about this meeting is that after that, we then broke into six table groups, at which one of the legislators was at. I happened to be at Representative Ott's table. And he was, you know, he seemed to be very genuinely concerned about, what is it that will make a difference? And so, folks around our table spoke a lot about, you know, these are fixes sort of reactionary, when you talk about window film and all of that. And for all of us, we all had stories that were really on the proactive part of it, the mental health piece. And different districts had different pieces, but, you know, just to get to the story of one learner in our, in our district, the number of resources that it takes that one person to make a sustainable change between social workers and school psychs, and, and it's not just a one-time thing, because often, it's connecting them with a community resource, because that's our biggest challenge, is sometimes we can identify it. And I think we've started to fill that gap, where our social workers are doing a phenomenal job now, and, and sort of even recommending some outside resources, professional help outside of what our school can provide. The challenge therein lies where the parents now have to get that child to that outside professional, and that's sometimes where that whole loop falls down. So, some districts are looking at internal, you know, support services, there are districts that have an outside consult, you know, professional service on-site, and then it's just making sure that all, they cover, carry all insurances. So, sometimes, just having parents get them there is where that whole system breaks down. Without that outside piece of it, though, we can only provide so much. So, I think everybody had that story about, that the resources, or developing stronger community partnerships, that there's not, and sharing of information, we're all aware of, at schools, we deal with the FERPA, and healthcare has this HIPAA, but without us being able to share that information, sometimes that creates a barrier, because we have to, we don't know some of that stuff, and they don't know some of the stuff that we have. So, if we can make that continuous improvement with whatever help they're getting. So, I felt like it was a really good meeting, I think it's on everybody's mind right now, whether it's, you know, the opioid crisis, because I think there's a lot of people know that that is stemming from some other conditions, often, if it's lack of getting some attention with, you know, what other stressors there might be, if it's mental health, if it's family things that have sort of done that. But I think it was a good conversation, I felt, and it wasn't just political, I didn't feel like I was at a political agenda piece of it. I think people were very sincere in what they were offering, and what can we do? Because we all talked about, no, most of our teachers didn't get into teaching to do trauma-informed care, and all of the stuff that they're expected to know, and look at a child in a classroom, and before you can even teach, you have to know so many more things about them that was not even, I mean, you know, you're this mini-social worker almost before you can even teach them. So, what does that mean, and how does that influence, as we move forward, the training that's needed, you know, colleges, universities, and all of that? And they're trying to keep up, but it doesn't just happen, because there's that, that much training with it. So, it was a good meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, E, monthly financials, Mike.
I have nothing to add to the numbers. It's nice to see a revenue line of B above, so that was good.
Okay, any questions? Okay, eight items for future consideration. Okay, great. Nine announcements, anyone have any?
Only that we're having that marching, marching band invitation on July 12th at Falcon Field. It's going to be eight bands competing, it's going to be hosted by our marching band. We are, I think, just performing the opening Star Spangled Banner, but it'll be other bands competing that are kind of like club version of bands, so they should be really good.
Great.
It'll be Thursday evening.
Perfect.
July 12th.
And our band will be in both, in Greenfield and Hills Corners for the July parade. So, we had a little hiatus last year, but if you're going to attend one of those, we'll be back at those parades this year.
Do we rig the seating in that? Do we get a good seat? Going up to the top?
Sure.
Draw?
Sure you can, yeah.
Right?
You can go in the announce, you can go in the announcements.
You probably can, yeah.
You really want to.
Just wear your name tag.
Of course.
You're good to go.
Yep, as we mentioned before, reminder, the July 9th, July 16th meetings, and then the full board meeting on July 23rd, which will have the vote. Board will have a car in the parades as well, for Greenfield and Hills Corners. So, there's that. Anybody that wants to be in the car, Nancy already volunteered, so she's one. She just says, she doesn't have to walk, she's good, so we're good. Right? Does that sound less weird?
I don't recall that. I don't recall that at all.
No, but anybody that wants to be in it, I'll need to, any other announcements? Okay, all right, so then, I'll take a...
Could you give us a little times on those, in case we did want to participate? Or timeframes?
Yeah, Hills Corners, they start at three.
No, I mean, like formal, a little formal note.
Yeah, we'll send, yeah, absolutely. But they're starting to gather at three, because the parade route changed, so they're doing it at three, okay. So, then I'll take a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85. Sorry, screensaver again. One, C and E to discuss, A, superintendent evaluation, and B, negotiations with the Whitnell Area Federation of Teachers, WAFT.
So moved.
Thank you, Stephanie, in a second, second. Okay, roll call vote, Nancy.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.